All right, noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. As always, first on our agenda is citizens' concerns. If there's anybody who has something they'd like to raise that is not on our agenda, you may do so briefly.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. There's currently a bill still, apparently in informal session, called H 4290, which is called the Housing Choice Bill. And a lot of people are saying that that bill will get a lot more affordable housing. And I urge people who are affordable housing fans to take a look at the bill itself. The actual language does not require any affordable housing. And so if a town has not reached 10%, then there's zoning relief for developers, but in that zoning relief, there's no actual affordable housing required. The earlier version did, and this one doesn't, so please be assured of that. I have a concern and hope to get some clarification from the Board of Selectmen, and it's regarding this turning lane on the Kelly's Corner design. It's my understanding that there's been traffic analysis, and I would like to make sure that the voters know how much of the turning lane is this need or requirement or perceived requirement is due to potential rezoning as opposed to the current situation before rezoning. So I'm not looking for an answer now unless you have it, but I would like that eventually.
I do not, and I would suggest contacting the Kelly's Corner Committee, as they'd probably be better able to answer that.
They're meeting here on Monday, so I guess I'm raising awareness that we want to have that distinction made relative to traffic analysis. And then the water situation, the town meeting voted unanimously to order a water study, and we were waiting, at least I was waiting, for the court case with Concord to get resolved. And so I'm wondering where that's going, because I heard, I overheard, an official saying that we don't need the water study because we have plenty of water, and that the petitioners were mistaken. And personally, as a voter, I would like the water study done, even if some staff people think that there's plenty of water, because if they think there's plenty of water, then they don't mind doing the study. You know, just like in my business, although I trust my assistant, I want to see the report every month about what's going on, and so I'm wondering what's going on.
Yep, so we've talked about that in a public hearing, and the first step in that was the RAC workshop, which we'll be talking about later tonight.
Thank you.
So we will discuss that. Great, any other citizens' concerns? Yes?
Hello, I'm Kim Castens, 294 Pope Road. I see that you have two water items on your agenda for this evening, so I thought I would take the opportunity to mention one other upcoming water event. The Green Acton Water Committee is going to be sponsoring an educational panel discussion about 1-4 dioxane in groundwater and drinking water. As you know, 1-4 dioxane is coming into our Aspet One well field from both Superfund sites, the WR Grace and the NMI site. And although the level of 1-4 dioxane has been kept conscientiously below the Massachusetts guideline, it's still a potential threat to the town. So the Green Acton Water Committee is sponsoring a panel discussion with three experts, one hydrologist, one toxicologist, and one environmental engineer. The date is Thursday, October 25th, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., in the Acton Public Safety Building, so I hope you'll come.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other public concerns, citizens' concerns? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the chairman's update. Tomorrow night, August 7th, is National Night Out, and there will be activities, including an open house through the Acton Police Department at the public safety facility from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., so hopefully people can stop by for that. There also will be paving going on at the main parking lot for the South Acton Train Station on the weekends of August 18th and August 25th, and there's more information on that on the town website, so if you tend to park there, I'd encourage you to check that out, so you can understand what impact that might have on you. Speaking of the South Acton Train Station and parking issues, we will be having a discussion of the Maple Street Parking Lot, I just want to call it commuter, carpool piloting program at our next meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And so people know, our next meeting is not until Monday, September 17th. We only have traditionally one meeting in August, and then due to two holidays, our next meeting will not be until then, so just be aware that we have a bit of a break. In the meantime, we will be releasing the next draft of the sustainability policy. I'm hoping to have that in early September to be put out, hopefully on our town website, and emailed out to all of the boards and committees, and shared publicly as well for additional input and discussion planned right now for, I believe it's October 1st, that Board of Selectmen meeting. There are a number of upcoming events and concerts at NARA between now and September 17th, so I recommend people going on the Recreation Department's page on the town website to see all of the great events coming up. One of their events is a fundraiser for the TJ O'Grady Skate Park on August 25th from 10:00 to 1:00 that will be hosted at the skate park, and funding will help the next phase of, or final phase of, expanding the skate park there. And that is my update. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much. Excuse me? Thank you very much. I have a few things to share this evening. First, I want to announce that the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, awarded the town with an award for financial reporting for our comprehensive annual financial reports. This is the fourth year in a row we've received that distinction, and congratulations to Steve Barrett and the rest of the finance group that works hard to put that information out every year. Our own Mark Hald, Assistant Town Manager, recently has been certified as a public purchasing official, so that was a big accomplishment, so congratulations to Mark. The Fire and Police Department collaborated with the Rec Department at the end of July, along with the Middlesex District Attorney, Marion Ryan, to hold a water safety event. This was a great event. Some of us were there, and it included a live water safety demo, where the firefighters saved a lifeguard who was in the water. It was a great event, so thanks for everyone for being there and for showing off some of our skills. Just an update on the goal-setting meeting that you held at the end of July. Those goals, we have included in draft minutes for your meeting, which we'll bring for your approval next meeting, and we also are going to publish that along with sort of the exact goals as decided that night. We'll put that, both of those documents will be on our website shortly, and I've distributed them to the staff, so thanks for helping set our direction for the year. Let's see, the Staff Professional Development Day scheduled for September 21st, so hope you can join us, members of the board. The town offices will be closed to help support that. Police and Fire will still be open. Finally, the Acton Citizens' Police Academy is a big program starting September 5th. It's eight weeks on Wednesdays, and it's designed for citizens 18 and older to learn about police work. So contact Chief Burles if you'd like to attend. I think it's going to be a great program, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We are slightly ahead of schedule, so I will do the consent agenda in the meantime. So I will read through these. Please say "hold" if you would like to hold any of them. Number nine, Ride to Defeat ALS, September 23rd, 2018. Number 10, Adopt Designer Selection Guidelines. Number 11, I'm going to hold and pull, it was a Safe Plan Special Permit for Brookside Shops, an amended decision or request for one-time exception, but they have, they're going, it was a request to do work off-hours, and they're going to do it during normal hours, so we do not need to do that. Number 12, waiver of fees, Bridge to Turkey Recreation Department. Number 13, committee appointments, Louis Yorke, Camille Duquette, Paul Hocknull, full members of the 53 River Street Master Plan Special Committee, and we're holding that one, I believe. Number 14, Green Communities Grant Funding Request for Municipal Properties. Number 15, Preservation Restriction Agreement for Habitat Project at 43 to 45 School Street. Number 16, meeting minutes, May 11th and July 16th, 2018. Number 17, One-Day Alcoholic Beverage License, Sean Odell, October 10th, 2018, NARA Park. Number 18, accept gift, a gift totaling $500 from the Steinberg Lally Charitable Foundation to be used for the annual classical concert held on June 21st, 2018. Number 19, accept gift, a gift totaling $550 from anonymous donor to be used towards the annual classical concert held on June 21st, 2018. Number 20, request for construction within a public way. Number 21, fee waiver request, Common Ground Inc., 446 Massachusetts Ave Sewer and Building. And number 22, request dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Okay, so we, I explained why we held number 11, we'll pull that, and number 13, Peter, can you clarify, because I believe it's only two of these members?
Right, this reflects the board's decision to amend the charge for the 53 River Street Committee at our last meeting to change it from seven full members and two associates to 10 full members. We actually had eight full members appointed, so we had to amend the charge to reflect that. Louis Yorke is already a full member, so the motion should read to appoint Camille and Paul as full members.
Do you want to make a motion just for that one?
Sure, I'll move that the board approved the appointment of Camille Duquette and Paul Hocknull as full members of 53 River Street Master Plan Special Committee.
Okay, all those in favor, please say "aye." Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, then can we have a motion on the rest of them, please?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 9, 10, 12, and 14 through 22.
So. All those in favor, please say "aye." Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, great. Okay, it is just 7:10, so that is perfect. We have a hearing. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on August 6th, 2018, at 7:10 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of Eversource for grant of one new pole installation on Summer Street, Southerly Side, approximately 628 feet west of Winter Street, Acton. The application, the company plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. And you are here for Eversource?
Yes, Christine Cosby, Eversource Energy, and we are requesting permission for grant a location for new pole, 55 Over 20A. And that would, the purpose of that pole would be to provide a new electric service to a new home under construction at Three Summer Place.
Okay, are there any questions from board members? Peter?
You saw the comment from the Engineering Department about the location cutting into the existing sidewalk and requesting that you move it a little bit to allow it to be away from the sidewalk?
I did not see that.
Okay.
But I think if I provided you the copy of it, we will do as requested.
Okay, I assume it'll still be on town property, and you won't have to go on private property, but we would like to keep the full width of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience? Yes?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I have a question regarding 5G antennas. I've gotten a heads-up from people in other states that the paperwork being submitted for new poles, et cetera, they're slipping in like language that allows them to bypass the local permitting process to install effectively small cell towers on these poles that are considered quite dangerous, especially if they're anywhere near anybody's houses or schools, et cetera. So I just want to confirm that this is not, this in no way, shape, or form allows them to move forward with a 5G installation on this pole.
What I can read on this, no, but again, this is available in our packet, so you can review it yourself if you have concerns, but no, that is not my understanding of this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Janet?
I was just going to move.
Okay.
Move to approve the proposed pole installation on Summer Street as described in the notice, with the understanding, in accordance with the Town DPW Director's request, that the pole be located at the back of the sidewalk to leave full sidewalk with available for a pow.
So. Okay, all those in favor, please say "aye." Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, great, thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay. Okay, this is not an official hearing, so I think we can take this. The next item is the Transfer Station and Recycling Facility Fee Recommendation. So, Mr. Manager, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, thank you. Director of Public Works, Cory Yorke, is here and has prepared a brief presentation to go over his proposal for how we should handle the rates for this year.
Yeah, so as we look at the rates for the transfer station, we typically look at the last year, the last couple of years, see how things are going. We've been monitoring as we've implemented the new pay-as-you-throw program, so I was going to just run you through sort of what we found for last year's program, starting out with the trash. This is sort of looking at the trash a couple of years prior to implementing pay-as-you-throw, and then the three years since, so we're currently running about an average reduction of trash, about 36%, which was right in line with what the DEP was saying when we were implementing the program. So that's been going as planned, which is good. Next, looking at the recycling, same thing as we have the pay-as-you-throw program, it causes more incentive for people to pull recyclables out. So we did see a good increase in the mix paper. I think we've seen a little bit less of an increase in the co-mingle, but we are seeing increases to that in general, so it's been an overall success as far as that goes. In addition, we're looking at sticker sales and that, so as we look at the full access non-sticker sales, we did see a slight decline, which we've heard from other communities happens with the pay-as-you-throw. It seems like it's been staying pretty consistent since pay-as-you-throw has been in, a little bit of fluctuation here and there, but not too bad. But we have seen a dramatic increase in our recycling program, in the senior program, which has been good. We've been chugging along pretty well with that. And then, as this program, as you know, you pay for the bag, the cost of the bag covers the cost of that trash that you're throwing out, so we kind of monitor the three types of bags we sell, the 8-gallon, the 15-gallon, and 30-gallon. So we've been kind of monitoring those, so they were pretty consistent between fiscal year '17 and '18, the first year of the program. Because it's new, everyone's kind of learning it, so we didn't use that in our formula as far as analyzing this rate, but this is showing the 30-gallon. We are in the process of converting that to the new 33-gallon, so they're, we're depleting sort of the inventory that's out there. It sounds like it might be in line, so the new 33-gallon bags will start showing up about the start of this program in September. So we've been looking at sort of everything that's been happening the last couple of years, it's been pretty good. So the recommendation for the fees for the Acton program is to stay the same prices as we are now. The numbers are holding good, but the revenue that we bring in from recycling, so it's covering the cost of the program. We did do one of the pilot program last year, where we allowed non-Acton residents to come and buy a full access sticker. So we took a closer look at that, so we do have a slight increase in that sticker program. That was just, there's certain benefits that works in the program for the Acton residents as far as revenue that we generate, stuff like that. So we relooked at that, so it's, we're proposing to increase that sticker price up to $180, but the Acton program, I think, is sustainable right now with what we have, so we'd be looking to keep that fee structure the same for another year.
Great. All right, thank you, Cory. Any questions from board members? Janet?
Cory, this probably didn't have an impact, but I was just wondering if there was any concern about the fact that people were having trouble getting rid of their plastic, accumulated recyclable plastic, because certain international entities were declining it, and there was this sort of, everybody was piling up with plastic that nobody wanted. Was there any impact on us, or no?
Yes and no, we were fortunate. Currently, our vendor that we use is the L Harvey. They're a slightly bigger organization, they're having those struggles as far as finding destinations for it, but we never had a situation where they turned our material away. The costs were going up, and I think they've been trying to find other means, but like you said, it's been right now, the current acceptor of most of that material has been, it's been a difficult year trying to resolve that, so, but so far, so good for us, yeah.
Peter?
I'm just, I'm just doing a quick calculation here. We're doing 2,200 tons of trash. That still gets trucked to Worcester, right?
That gets trucked to Whalebrader in North Andover, is where we currently take our trash.
Oh, Whalebrader is still running the incinerator up there?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought it had been being trucked to Worcester and then put in, and put on a train to Ohio for a landfill or something.
We were, the prior contract with Devon's, Devon's Recycling was the company that had that option of putting it onto a cart and taking it out, but we've been in a contract now with Whalebrader, I think, for the last two years, we've been using them, so.
Okay, I thought they had gone bankrupt, but, so this is obviously a different contract than that disaster that we had with Northeast whatever. Okay. So that's, if we're doing 2,200 tons, that's 4 million pounds of trash a year that we're burning.
I would agree with that.
A ton is 2,000 pounds, so 2,200 times 2,000 is 4 million, almost 500,000 pounds of trash that we burn every year, okay? So we divide that by 22,000 residents, that's 202 pounds a person?
Most, not everybody in town uses a transfer station.
I understand that, I'm just doing averages here. So do you know how that compares to other towns, the amount of trash? I mean, I think that the pay-as-you-throw program has worked wonderful, the only reason I'm going through this exercise is we got to keep looking at ways to reduce our trash. Do you think people are throwing out things that could be recycled? Is that happening a lot?
It's getting better. We used to, we used to see quite a bit of cardboard and stuff, and that was what I think prompted a lot of people to start looking at this. We see a lot less, but there's always room for improvement, trying different ways, yeah.
Well, whatever you hear from other towns, or you know, what the latest cutting-edge stuff is to try to ensure that more goes into the recycle bins instead of the trash, certainly Green Acton, we'd be encouraged to work on that. The Green Advisory Board, if they have any recommendations, we should certainly, the town ought to pursue those, so.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Joan or John, any questions?
Yeah, I'm very impressed.
Can you just use the mic, John?
Yeah.
In reading through the packet, I was, you know, really impressed by the reduction being over 36% in our annual trash volume since the implementation of the pay-as-you-throw program, so well done, and thank you.
Yes, it seems to have gone well, and it seems well-received with the people that use it, so.
Impressive.
Joan?
Having cleaned out the garage, Joe and his crew do a great job of directing you to the proper place.
That's good, yes.
I'll just echo my thanks, Cory. I think it, yeah, as you know, big supportive pay-as-you-throw, and then I, to build on Peter's comments, I mean, you've also done a lot of other things, including facilitating the opening and running of the swap shop where people can drop stuff. We have constant piles in our house of just things to go to the swap shop, things to go to recycling, and then also the composting, which has made a huge difference. I think it cuts down on the trash significantly, so we have very little trash. But, you know, as Peter said, anything more we can do would be great. My one question was about the non-Acton residents. Who do you find is using those stickers? Is it people that don't have access to a transfer station like this, or?
The staff that have spoken to some, I think we've sold about 18 of them over the course of the year. Most of them are the neighboring communities, and they don't have a recycling program like we have, so they, I know some are coming just for yard waste, but just a lot of the opportunities that we've been able to develop here, they don't have them in their communities, so.
Yeah, okay, well, that's great. I mean, I think it speaks of people are willing to take their, you know, spend their weekend time to drive their trash out of, and recycling out of town, it means you're doing something right here, so congratulations, and thank you. Questions from the audience?
Oh, yes, I was just going to suggest, there is a program in New Hampshire, I don't know if it's New Hampshire state-based, but a community of friends in New Hampshire have recycling of regular batteries, so that's one thing. And then there's also a program for getting rid of kitty litter, which is also a big contributor to the tons of wastage. And just, I know I'm not as green as some of these folks that I work with, but I'm down to less than a pound of landfill trash per week, so, and I know that that's, like, I don't know how that works out on the averages, but I'm tracking it, and I'm getting better, I hope. Thanks.
Yes. Yes, sir, Charlie.
Charlie Aaronson, the Husmer Street. I just want to add my gratitude for your resizing of the trash bags that now will fit the trash containers rather than falling inside. It may seem like a trivial thing, but it was an aggravation, and thank you.
I was just going to put a plug in for, the swap shop needs people to help. I don't know all the details, but they need people to stand there and help swap. Thanks.
Okay, all right, seeing nobody else, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation? So moved? Okay, all those in favor, say "aye." Aye. All those opposed, any abstentions? All right, that passes. Thank you very much, Cory. Okay, up next, we are in Selectmen's Business. Number three, the Board to call a special town election for the ballot question on the ban of retail marijuana. Mr. Manager?
This is simply just to have the board formally call for the special election. I believe the language was provided by council, and we've looked at it, and if we're comfortable with it, I think the next step would be to work with the Secretary of the Commonwealth to get it on the ballot, or to prepare the ballot.
That sounds right. Okay, so we just need a motion to call the election, and it's September 4? Do we have to say the day? September? Oh, November, thank you, you're right. Thank you, November 6.
Move to call for a special town election for ballot question on the ban of retail marijuana on Tuesday, November 6.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor, please say "aye." Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Okay, up next is the, a presentation from Oars on Drought Resilience.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah, and you've got to use the mic, though. Yeah.
So thank, thank you very much. I appreciate having a few minutes on your agenda, and it is powering up now. I'm Alison Field Juma, I am the Executive Director of Oars, and I think I've met most of you, but not all of you, and I'm just going to say a couple words about what Oars does, and if you, look behind you, there's the presentation. I don't know if you can see it. True, you've got, but it's pretty, or big. Anyway, Oars is the watershed organization for the Asvet, Sudbury, and Concord Rivers, and Acton is in that watershed and on the Asvet River, and we use science-based advocacy and education to restore the health of our rivers, and we do quite a lot of science. We thank the town of Acton for its contributions to that. Well, the reason, what really brings me here tonight is that we're at a moment where there's a lot of synergy between some of the regulations that are, that are out there that is, can be really useful for the community. Something's squeaking, I'm not quite sure why.
I think it's if we have.
Oh, that's, that might be better. Good. So I think we all, you know, we all want to have sustainable water supplies and a healthy ecology, and we want that to last for the coming generations, and we want to have opportunities for people to go outdoors and recreate on our, on our surface waters. But we have issues of water shortages, water pollution, loss of flow in our water bodies, and loss of biodiversity, and all of those can affect our local economy and our quality of life. So the bits that I wanted to talk about a little bit tonight are certain regulations. There's the Clean Water Act, which is a federal and state law, which governs wastewater discharges and stormwater discharges, and the town of Acton is under the MS4 program, which is a stormwater program, and that's gone into effect July 1st, so that will be one thing that's happening. There's also the Water Management Act, which is state law, which regulates water withdrawals. The Acton Water District gets the permits for that, and then, and those are also happening this year, if they, they're sort of chugging their way along. And then there's the Wetlands Protection Act, of course, in your local bylaws, stormwater bylaws. But the key thing is, is that they're, both the MS4 stormwater permit and the Water Management Act permits, both have incentives for recharging Act permits, both have incentives for recharging, recharging stormwater. And so that's where they come together. So, of course, we don't want to go back to 2016, really, and think about the drought that happened there. It was a very serious drought, but we know that these sorts of things are going to happen again. In terms of precipitation, our region, the northeast region, was in an emergency, ranked as an emergency. So when you have, and so this is this year, but it was in June, it was not looking good, but luckily there was rainfall. But any year, we could have another drought like 2016. One of the reasons we're concerned about that, among many, is that it affects the stream flow in our water bodies that can have, it takes, so that's in Neshoba Brook, Fish and Wildlife estimates it'll take four to six years for Neshoba Brook to recover from being a dry stream bed. But if you have a drought before four to six years, of course, it doesn't get to recover, so it becomes increasingly difficult. It affects threatened species that have to be relocated and things like that. And of course, recreation was pretty impossible. So at the state level, unfortunately, there's a bit of a patchwork of regulation. Each community that has a public water supply gets its rules from Mass DEP, and they vary. So this map shows that different communities, they could be right next to each other, were having different rules in terms of when there were restrictions on water use. And then within each of those communities, there's another patchwork, because you have the private wells that people may be using for irrigation, which are not regulated, and so that you could have one neighbor being told they can't use water for irrigation and the next one could. Or have somebody irrigating from a private well and actually draining, making it so that their next-door neighbor's well goes dry, and they have to then invest a lot of money to dig theirs deeper. So there are some real inequities in the system. So in Acton, this is Acton, actually, Acton's better off than some of its neighboring communities. This is just a state map, it's a fun, interactive map, actually. But the orange part shows that there's a net depletion of water, groundwater, in that sub-basin. And as you can see, Acton does not have that yet, but it has a lot of water withdrawal points, so the goal is to avoid turning orange. And to have enough water, of course. We have cold water fishery resources, which are important to protect. Acton has, of course, Nagog Brook, which is, they're in Aqua, it's a little bit hard to see there. And they are particularly important because, one, they're very, they're special creatures that live in these cold water resources, native brook trout, but also they are where the water and the groundwater recharge, and so we need to protect them to protect ourselves, essentially. So the main problem that really now that we're starting to see is that more hard rain is falling, so precipitation is becoming more extreme. This is, this is a graph from the entire country that shows that heavy rain has become more and more frequent, which means that that water is less likely to soak into the ground and recharge, and it's more likely to cause floods. It's not evenly spread over the country. Unfortunately, in fact, it's happening worst in the northeast, and in fact, absolutely the worst in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. So we've had, this was just till 2011, 100% increase in the frequency of our precipitation being concentrated as an extreme event. So that kind of spells some trouble. So we're interested in building resilience to drought, and that can really be through two main ways. One is land management and one's water management. So on the land management side, we want to restore stream continuity, so that's dealing with culverts and bridges, and there are stream crossing standards that the state has that your DPW complies with. Also, there are, of course, wetlands protection rules and floodplain rules, and those we really see need to be strengthened over, since the Wetlands Protection Act was passed originally, it has been weakened in various ways. And because of these changes in the climate in particular and the increasing pressure from development, we need to take a hard look at actually strengthening those rules. So for the town, you have the ability to do that through your bylaw of increasing buffer zones, increasing the size of the no-build areas. It's a tough sell, but we think it's going to be really important to protect property and the resources. Soil is a critical part of this, requiring adequate topsoil in all developments is an action that can be taken, protecting and planting trees. Just EPA study in Walltham showed that a courtyard that had mature trees had 15 degrees lower temperature and a heat wave than the courtyard with no trees. So essentially, there was no heat wave in that courtyard, and that's a really significant difference. Recharging stormwater, using green infrastructure and low-impact development to do that, educating people about stormwater, and recharging wastewater, and actually acting as a leader in that because of your wastewater facility. Recharging stormwater, we don't need to go into, because you probably all know about it, but it's something that needs to be encouraged and integrated wherever possible. Get away from islands of vegetation to instead having depressions of vegetation that can actually hold the water. There's some great plans out there that take stormwater from the streets and sidewalks, filter it, and then infiltrate it. Putting it where the trees are helps the trees survive. That right one is in West Concord. Making sure that you don't use curbs unless you need to, because curbs channel the water and take hot water and pour it into streams where it will kill the aquatic life. In terms of water supply, I'll just talk about a couple things. One is increasing the efficiency of use. So one way to do that is to take a net blue approach. Acton was actually one of the participants in a national study of that. And that basically is, it's a kind of an offset policy where you can, where any new growth needs to be as efficient as possible, and then help the community put in place more efficiency in terms of, we have a lot of old pipes, we have a lot of old fixtures, so that in the end, the new development doesn't create a net increase in the water demand. And there are a lot of tools to help with this. There's model bylaws and offset methodology, et cetera, that's available. But because you have a water district, it's not as straightforward as in some communities where the, you're all making the same, the decisions about the same thing. So it requires perhaps more coordination between the town and the water district to put the various zoning rules or whatever ordinances, bylaws in place that would encourage that. The other thing is, just to say about nonessential water use, this gets back to the private well, irrigation well question of finding ways to encourage people not to have lawns that need irrigation or landscape that needs irrigation beyond a couple of years for it to get established. It's, it's not a good use of our water. It's a completely consumptive use. It does not go into the ground and recharge the groundwater. So that's something that is generally under the Board of Health, because they permit wells, and so that's something to look at. The town of Sudbury did put in place, no, they didn't put in place, they thought about putting in place a bylaw to regulate private wells so that they had to abide by the same restrictions during a drought emergency. That did not go to town meeting because the state has been revising their drought management plan, but they, they intend to follow up on that. There's a new program to help communities with the MS4 program. I imagine your staff know about that. It's a great program. And this is just my last slide, and it's really just a list showing the things that can be done. Some of them look like very small incremental changes, some of them are bigger asks, but there are a lot of things that can be done in site plan reviews, subdivision review, to incentivize the use of green infrastructure, protecting those green resources that exist, and using low-impact development that will really increase the amount of water that goes into the soil instead of flooding the streets. And so you have, you have all that, so I won't say anything more about it. But I, I have a few copies also of the Mass Autobonds fact sheets, which are really great. I'll leave them with you if any of you are interested to take a look. And I encourage you to look at the Mass, Central Mass Stormwater Coalition's website, because they have some great materials they've developed as well. So that's all, and thank you very much for listening.
All right. Thank you so much, Allison. Questions from board members? Janet?
Allison, thank you very much for being on top of water-related issues. I have a question. You said that Sudbury had looked into regulating private wells. Now, I know, I grew up in Sudbury, so I know that a lot of people there are on public water, but I didn't know if the private wells were for people who were using private wells for all purposes, or if they were using them for irrigation. Because I'm part of the 5% in Acton that lives off of a private well for all purposes, and I'm in a neighborhood where people have in-ground sprinklers, which are running when it's just after it's raining, or it's raining, and they're, you know, kind of washing the street. And I, I do worry, because they're not regulated. I understand from the water district people that there is authority locally to regulate private wells, but I've never really heard much discussion about doing that. And I don't know how, what you would do. You'd have to force people to have meters or whatever.
Right. Yeah, it's complicated. I know in Wayland that because they wanted to preserve the capacity of their public water supply, they told people they could not use town water for irrigation. And when they did that, their per capita water consumption went way down, but a lot of wells were drilled for irrigation. So those really were, you could sort of tell that those were for irrigation and they weren't for general household use. But it's tricky, because there are some that are probably both. I think the easiest way is if you've got a drought emergency, or you have, you know, the town is in a state where there's a water, outdoor water ban. It's pretty easy, that you just go along and see who's watering and who isn't.
Or who's lawn looks green, or who has a healthy lawn at all.
Right. Or has a lawn at that point. So I think that, you know, there is a little bit of the devils in the details, and it may depend on each town of how to do it, but there are several communities in Massachusetts, I don't remember their names right now, who, who have done it. And Sudbury was very keen on it, but they wanted to wait and see what the state would do. And the state is about to put their new drought management plan into effect. And so that will be in effect when there was some legislation that's going to be, again, considered at the state level to just apply this to everybody, which would make it so much easier for the towns, but that hasn't happened yet.
Well, I actually, as somebody who's on a private well, I would welcome regulation, just because I, I sort of abide, we're very economizing when it comes to water usage. If you saw our lawn, it's green. What's growing in it is very little grass. It's a lot of other stuff, and it looks pretty good at certain times of the year. But, yeah, if I, I've been gradually shrinking our lawn over the past 20 years, and if I could, I'd shrink it even more. But, you know, anyhow, but I'll be interested to see if there's any progress on that front. But thank you very much for all this information.
You're welcome. It's great to have examples, actually, of how a place can look nice without a lawn.
Peter?
The town bought a piece of property on River Street, which abuts Fort Brook Pond, or Fort Pond Brook. It's an old mill site. We do have a dam there. Looks like you, you're, I mean, I think the state recommends that dams be removed. There's at least one other dam up at Erickson's Grain Mill that dams up the mill pond, which is a lot more water than the mill on River Street holds back. But I'm just learning how complicated this is. I mean, in terms of the hydrological studies about what happens downstream, there are already properties that get flooded downstream, so removing a dam could cause a lot more issues. There are issues with historic committees. They view these mill dams as historic structures, so there, there is a, an old stone structure and a more recent concrete thing, so we may just breach the dam and tear down the concrete. But it, it sounds like you recommend removing dams wherever possible to help with the water issues?
So first of all, dams do cause problems in terms of the water behind them gets stagnant and nutrient-rich and problematic in ways, and it also blocks the movement of wildlife, et cetera. So it's a very case-by-case thing. There are some cases where you really wouldn't want to remove the dam, but there are so many of these old mill dams that it would make sense to remove as many as possible in general. And because they are not, you can't adjust the water level behind them, they serve no flood control purpose. With or without that dam, well, you certainly won't get more flooding if you take the dam out. You could get less, because you've essentially created a bigger floodplain. So where the water was will now be available for floodwater, whereas it isn't if you've got a dam there, because it's already full, essentially. So in fact, it can help with flooding problems, and there are ways to deal with the historic question, because those, they are part of our history, but there are ways to even have historic preservation that is compatible with the free, most of the water being in a free-flowing state. So we've actually done quite a lot of work at Oars on that, and we'd be happy to share more with you, but I think it would be great to at least have a conversation about some of the mill dams in town.
Okay, thank you. And do you, you said Oars tests certain streams in Acton. Do you test that? We were wondering in the committee whether, what the quality of the water was in that stretch of Fort Pond Brook. Do you know if you test the water there at all?
I didn't bring, we, we have a lot of water quality testing sites, and I don't know that we have any tribute, I think we have on Neshoba Brook, but I don't think there are any other tributaries in Acton, but I can check. But again, we have ours, on our website, we also have our water quality reports. So, but it's mainly the mainstem rivers that we test the water quality in and a few tributaries.
Okay. And then on the subject of sewers, we have a West Acton Sewer Study Committee. I know you recommend that the water be recharged into the ground rather than transported. I think when we bought, the engineers who were looking at West Acton, I asked them this question, because I've been reading where the MWRA system, you know, takes all this water from very far away and transports it to Deer Island, and that doesn't work well. Their opinion was, it depends on how far you transport it. So you seem to be in favor of the treatment center that Acton has in South Acton. So I'm assuming, I think that was built originally because there were a lot of failing septic systems in South Acton, which was polluting the groundwater, I think, from phosphorus or whatever that would leak out of those systems. So that water was transported to South Acton, not very far away. Is that a reasonable solution if West Acton has that problem? And maybe in West Acton, we're looking at more development by building more sewers rather than failing sewers. I'm not really aware of what the main issues are there. But, I mean, transporting water from South Acton to the, to the disposal treatment plant in, on the Assabette River makes sense if the justification is there for it, rather than trying to rebuild all the septic systems to Title V, I guess. Is that, would you agree to that, or can you give us any insight into that?
So in, in general, sort of the shorter the distance it gets transported, the better. In other words, recharge it as close as you can to where it came from, because every time you transport it, you're short-circuiting whatever streams there were. So, you know, the water's pulled out from a well, and then if it heads into the septic, the sewer system, it bypasses that whole piece of land. So that's rough on the streams. But a failing septic system is even rougher. So there are a lot of what they call packaged treatment plants, so everything that, something that can fit in your basement, that's the size of a washing machine, all the way up to something that could service a whole community are available. And so it's really a very site-specific thing. Again, you want to see what suits that community, what fits, what are the soils like, but probably widespread septic systems are not the best arrangement right now, because if you have a little treatment package plant thing, you're controlling really the pollutants that come out of it, whereas a septic system, you're not, and it may flood, it may have problems. So, but certainly, you know, discharging wastewater to rivers, we don't do anymore. But it's, discharging it to the ground needs to be done right. But decentralization is generally good if you can, if the soils and other conditions work with you.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I just would point out that I think Acton does, is pretty progressive on this stuff. We have a 100-foot setback for wet, for wetlands. We're a tree city. We, we like trees. We try to keep as many as we can. The, I mean, we're looking at a, a tree-cutting bylaw that, that would help. Certainly, there's a lot more we can do, but thanks very much for your information.
John, or John? Any questions? Nope. Okay, I just wanted to say thank you very much for coming, Allison. It was really helpful and I appreciate sort of the different options or ideas that you gave us as well. I think that's much appreciated as opposed to just coming and saying what the problems are without offering, you know, what's going on in other areas or what are things that we could look into. So I definitely think a lot of this is stuff that Peter said some that we do and, and things that we can continue, can continue to consider. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions from the audience?
Thank you. Thanks so much for bringing up these issues. I'm really happy to see you here and also happy to see lots of solutions. I do some reviewing of water infrastructure industry trade publications, and there was a presentation given in a wonder, Water Infrastructure Industry Conference not too long ago by a water infrastructure manager in Worcester, who said, his, his name was, presentation was, "We can't conserve our way out of this." So just keep that in mind. And I wanted to also point out that two-thirds of the 16,000 permits for building housing units are people coming from out of state that don't actually need housing. They don't even qualify. Excuse me, they can afford existing housing. I can give you the figures on that if you like. But I'd also like to make note of some things that we can do here locally, and I'm really happy to hear about looking into, to tree clearing or land clearing by law. And I have some research that I've done on that enabling law. You put it into the town bylaw, not the zoning bylaw, so therefore it's not grandfatherable. So that's, it's also a 51% vote. But there's something we can do. Regulatory process is that FEMA maps, when developers come in to ask for their FEMA maps to be revised regionally, we're asking our town officials to say no to that and to pay attention to the observable flub maps, not the ones that they want to have us approve. So I noticed on the Oars presentation, it said to restore the health of the rivers, and I hope you also mean protect. And I was going to make that comment, but then I realized as you went through your presentation that you do the protection thing, too. And I was super happy to see land preservation on the list of things. I didn't see limits on growth because we can put a limits, number of permits per year, which would alleviate a lot of staff backup and help us achieve a lot of our other goals to preserve affordable housing, to, we can make those limits with exceptions for extremely low affordable housing. And reduction of impervious surfaces, the limiting of the size of the buildings as well as the land clearing, that's all in our, our abilities to accomplish. And I noticed your wonderful presentation, your wonderful phrase, "non-essential water use." I love that. And the Land Use Committee at Green Acton is working on a, an idea, a consensus-based position where we decide what new building is actually a public necessity, as opposed to just meeting a market demand. It's a very different thing because just because people want to buy something doesn't mean that we have to put our subsidies or our water, road capacity, whatever, into it. And my last comment, oh, I thank you for the sewer decentralization, certainly. And it's my understanding that there is no actual need for wide-scale searing in West Acton, so I want us to look at that, actual technical results, and pay attention to the local scientists. And my last comment is that I'm, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you that the land clearing limits would be a tough sell. I personally have been doing research and meeting with a lot of people that would normally be opposing, opposing such a thing. And I'm going to tell you, if you guys write it and propose it, I will promise to sell that, if that's what the word is, sell. I will talk people about the benefits, and I believe that that's a, I, I think that's an easy sell. But I don't like to use the word sell because we shouldn't be selling people public policy. I think we should just explain it to them and see if they like it. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, I'm Kim Castens from Pope Road. Thank you, Allison. I would like to know more about the NetBlue program that you started to tell us about, and in particular, what was Acton's participation in the National NetBlue Study and what came out of that?
Allison, do you have an answer on that, or?
Yeah, so there were 10, I think, communities in the national study. Acton was the only one that's actually a town. The others were cities. And Matt Mossdoller is really, is the person who worked on that. And so I don't know what his view of that is, so I would suggest, you know, I wanted to talk with him actually, but he's away today. So I can't really elucidate on specifically Acton's piece of that, except that it was more difficult because it's a water district. And a lot of the others had complete control over their water supply system within town or municipal government, so that I know was a particularly tricky thing.
All right, thank you, Allison. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate your time. Number five, the FY19 sewer O and M rates. I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much. The, the sewer enterprise budget was funded at a town meeting, and Steve Barrett, our finance director, is here to make a presentation on what he's recommending or what we're recommending for the rates for this year.
Good evening to the board. I'm here to ask for a vote of sewer commissioners for our FY19 billing. I'd like to review some key components of our sewer operation with the board prior to any questions and a vote. First off, the town has been providing public sewer services for 16 years. Interested to know that this public sewer service is available in about 11% of the town. We bill using prior year winter water usage, which eliminates summer activities from the calculation. We get these readings from the Acton Water District. We have approximately 680 customers. That's further broken down as 90% residential and 10% commercial. In terms of our operating costs, I think we're at an important point in our operations. As we close in on our first 20 years of sewer operations, I see that more and more of the budget needs to go towards equipment repairs and maintenance. The graph handed out depicts our annual sewer, sewer O and M budget for the last 13 years. You'll see that our cost structure is increasing in FY19 as a result of our sewer system aging and maturing. This results in my requesting a 4% increase in the town sewer O and M rate. Excuse me, if the board approves my recommendation, these rates result in an FY19 average residential monthly bill increase of $2.48. Our annual bill will go up to be about $823 for our single-family home customers. And at this point, are there any questions before the board considers a vote? Thank you.
Questions from board members? Peter?
See, we got an email this afternoon, I don't know if you saw it, about the sewer rates. And I think that's a different rate than the operation, maybe operation. I mean, is this, I'm sorry, you want to talk to this, Mr. Town Manager? Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. We did receive a, a question from a resident who had a question about how her billing is calculated, and we've worked with her to provide some answers to her questions. So I, I believe that situation's all, she, her question was basically, since we set our rates based on the winter usage, what if she happens to use a lot in the winter? How does that, how does that impact her? And so we have a few ideas that we've shared with her on how to resolve that.
And again, most people use a lot less in the winter. She seems to be potentially having some issues around reseating her lawn, but as we learned tonight, you don't have to have a very, very green lawn. So that could also be an option for people to consider. Other questions from board members? John?
Would like to thank Paul Campbell for getting the response to the resident who sent the email and directing her in the right way, and a few people as well. That was very quick service, quick response to him.
Questions from members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Move to approve the proposed sewer O and M budget.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? All right, that was easy, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Barrett? Okay, item number six is the preliminary plans for site plan parking garage for Insulet Core number 03/17/17-464 at 100 Nagog Park Drive. Yes?
Good evening, board members. I'm John Larkum. I'm with Insulet. I'm the Vice President of U.S. Manufacturing. And it just seems like a short time ago, although it was a little over a year and a half, that we were here requesting approval for a site plan special permit for our project at 100 Nagog. Well, at that point in time, I think we had mentioned that we were, our growth was pretty strong, and we anticipated future growth. We just didn't anticipate this much growth this fast. It's a good problem to have. We built our facility for four manufacturing lines, the really assembly lines, and we had two scheduled to go in, in 2019, and we had our third line not scheduled to go in until sometime in 2022 or 2023. Due to some of the circumstances in the marketplace, things like we were accepted into the CMS system, Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement system, we took over distribution from a third-party distributor in our international operations. We have some innovations that are hitting the field next year with what we call our Dash Project. And the fact that we currently, all of our product is sourced from a third-party co-packer in China, which, given the uncertainty around operations in China, we would want to pull some of that volume out of, out of China and back into the U.S. So I'm here tonight to request approval for the construction of a parking infrastructure on the site that would accommodate approximately 300 additional parking spaces. Now with me tonight is Chris Lad from CI Design and Mike Fabiano from High Point Engineering. Chris is our architect and Mike is our civil engineer, if there are any questions around the specific design parameters of the structure. And I think we have a, some slides with the prints. Is that right? If we need to refer to them, we can do that. I don't know if you have them in your packet, but prepare to do that. So what have we done so far? And again, one other thing about the project is, and the reason I would like to, to thank Roland, and I would like to thank the Design Review Board, and I would like to thank Paul Campbell, the town engineer, for getting this, to this point in this process where we are meeting in front of, of the board of selectmen tonight. I know they, I know with the summertime and vacations, they were able to meet and at least give you all recommendations on what we're proposing to do. So I want to thank them for kind of shepherding us through this process, at least to get us to this point. So with that said, we, we are proposing, and, and want to talk a little bit about the business reasons again. You know, why is it important that we are trying to get this in now? We just made the decision to invest in our third line, which actually now is scheduled to come up in January of 2020, not sometime in 2022 or 23. And I think we originally had estimated that we would have around 1,000 employees when we were fully operational at Insulet. Well, we didn't think that we would need that many employees this quickly. So this 300 additional, the structure which would accommodate 300 additional spaces gets us to those, those roughly 1,000 employees that, that, you know, that we had intended to get to originally. So, you know, again, good news, but we knew when we had the original site plan permit approved, that we only had parking for roughly 600 to 700 employees. So this, this gets us to that, to the number that we need. So, and the reason for expediting is we would like to get, if, once we get approval, and I understand, may not be able to get final approval tonight, but if we can get conditional approval, and at some time shortly, if we meet all the requirements and answer all the questions, then we would like to begin permitting, or at least go through the permitting process, once Chris completes his design, so that we can at least begin construction of the footings that are required to go in for the parking structure before the winter months. Our, our project this year at 100 Nagog had a little bit of a setback from a timeline standpoint because of the hard freeze that we had. I think we had a three-to-four-foot frost in the ground. So we don't want to, you know, incur, if we have another winter like that, then we will have to wait before we get those structural footings poured until, you know, sometime in March, April. That, that's why, you know, we're hoping to get, you know, the approval, go through the approval process, you know, as quickly as we can. So we have the, the drawings on, on, up on the screen behind you, if you don't have them in your packets. I think, I think there were a couple of recommendations, I think, that came out of the, out of the Design Review Board, and we certainly can address those. And if there are any other questions from the board members or the audience, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from board members? Janet?
I think it would be helpful for my colleagues if somebody, one of you, sort of led the board through the design of the garage, because I was at the Design Review Board meeting, and it was very helpful in understanding just how it was designed and some of the challenges in building on the slope and, and also sort of the view that you're going to have from different sides. I mean, from the street and then also from the neighborhood in the woods, things like that. It would be helpful, so.
No, I anticipated that, and we have our, my architect here is the expert that can answer most of those questions. Hopefully all.
Appreciate your time tonight, members of the board. My name is Chris Lad, I'm with CI Design. Any chance this has a laser pointer? Oh, it is, okay. Apologize for the image is difficult to see, but current proposed parking structure is in this footprint currently. Where it currently resides is over a, the original proposed parking lot, where actually the new structure increases pervious and reduces impervious, so from, from a square-foot area is actually in a smaller footprint. We're pushing, there's an, the new retaining wall is roughly here, apologize for the wiggle end, but it's the curve along the outside of the, the green area. The garage is put, is set back from the property setbacks, as well as any wetlands or, as the wetlands are endangered, is along this line here. So the decision to locate the, the garage where it's currently located is direct access off of Nagog. Any of the long elevations is on street side, which is already landscaped in terms of retaining walls, and the retaining wall's a step back and there's a landscape buffer. We're increasing landscape buffer with this additional green area by pushing it off. The short side would be visible, would, would, is against the, this back existing retention pond area. The, I think I can slide. Wow, that's tough to see. Not sure how beneficial that is. There's a.
Yeah, we, we have them in our packet, but the public doesn't.
It's going to be a pretty much invisible structure, as you can see. Just kidding.
That's terrible.
Okay, that's a little better. So what this drawing actually indicates is this is what's currently permitted from a surface parking area, from a surface parking area in terms of square footage and size, and from a pervious, impervious. What we're proposing, as you can see, is a small footprint. It's increased pervious, decrease impervious, pushing the parking and pushing the structure away from the retaining wall that currently is built and that's landscaped. The elevation sides is trying to max, it's, so this is a little deceptive because of the way the grading works. It, it, in order to get all the different levels of the structure, we do have to take a somewhat of what we call a site section. But we're trying to take benefit of the different, again, this is hard to see. I apologize, but we're trying to get the benefit of utilizing the high and low grades that are currently. to get the benefit of utilizing the high and low grades that are currently on site to minimize the heights of the different elevations, so when you, I guess this is the best one, when you come on site, this is high elevation, and then it drops to low elevation, so we have access at high and low. We will need, the fire department will prefer to have two means of egress and access onto the structure, which is what we're currently presenting. The stormwater for the garage that was previously approved will be modified to accommodate the garage, but be in the same location, it'll just be modified slightly to accommodate any of the footings, and because the actual footprint and the pervious and impervious is changing, we should be able to prove it. The, but the location and the design strategy, we'll be working with the town engineer, we've already met with town engineers on site. The UICs that recharge stormwater and recharge the groundwater back on site is, that are located in this location, will also be slightly modified just to accommodate structure location, but it will still function and be designed no different than what's previously approved. I do apologize for the imagery being difficult to read. There, the decks, which might be able to see slightly, is to maximize the efficiency of the garage, is that the garage is split, this might be the best one to see here, the garage is split between a slope parking area and a flat parking area, so you park on the slope, so you don't have any speed ramps or excess additional drive aisles that are just used for circulation purposes, so we're maximizing the parking on the slope up to minimize structure as well. So trying to increase the efficiency of the deck as much as possible. So one side would be sloped, the next side would be flat, one side would be sloped, the next side would be flat. Again, it's very difficult to see from these images, and I apologize. Any additional questions that I could clarify? That's obviously very high level. The exact increase in parking count is three hundred and twelve. I believe the counts show there a total of four hundred and something, but that includes the existing parking lot that is currently built, so the total of four hundred, I don't remember the four seventy-one, that might be shown, four seventy-one, includes the parking lot that is currently in place. So the actual addition is the three hundred and twelve.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from, or comments from board members? Joan?
Yes. Are you saying that you can enter and exit from both sides?
Yes, because of the grade, so there's a fourteen-foot grade elevation between lower deck and middle deck, I would call it. So due to that, to take benefit of the grade differential versus continuously build vertically, it made sense to just work with the existing grade to provide low access onto a lower deck, and then work through the garage to get to the second elevation, so you have two accesses to the parking structure at two different grade elevations. And again, that's just working with the existing topography.
And from the rear side of the garage, will those lights be visible to the neighbors?
The rear being this side?
Yeah.
So the parking deck had, so the parking deck has a precast panel that we've worked with the Design Review Board in designing in terms of trying to match the facades of the facility, and that has a precast panel that actually will hide, it's taller than any of the headlights from cars, so, and we're actually adding the similar type of panel along the perimeter, so from the ground parking through the deck parking, the actual precast panels will improve any overflow or distribution of light off property or outside of the deck because of the precast panels and the height of the panels. The height of, there will be some lights on top of the deck, and we're offering to provide those lights on a low-security level, that's motion detection only, very similar to the lighting that's being proposed in the lower parking lot area. The lighting on top of the deck, obviously not as tall as the lights in the surface parking. Right now, maximum is proposed is only twelve feet, but once we do the photometrics, which we will be doing, providing to the town to ensure that we meet town regulations and we don't exceed, there'll be a focus LED direct lens, similar to what's being proposed on site, but from a height standpoint, there'll be no more than twelve, if not, we'd actually probably decrease the height on top of the deck.
And my other question has to do with the stormwater and the runoff. Could you go over that again?
So the current stormwater that was designed for this lower parking area is specific to this lower parking area, so, meaning that it's an independent system, it's not overflowing or connected to the existing retention or stormwater system that's currently in place due to it being a wetlands and also being an endangered species area. So, in order for us, if we were to connect to it, we would have to go in and re-mold and reshape, and that would obviously be the wrong thing to do, et cetera, et cetera. So, the stormwater that was designed for the parking is a dead-end stormwater system that's in this parking location, that's specifically serving the new parking lot. That stormwater system will have to be modified slightly, it'll be designed and functioned the same way that it currently does, it'll just be slightly modified so, to accommodate any of the footings, just from a location standpoint. But from a design standpoint, functionality and operation standpoint, it's going to still be a dead-end system, it's still not, it will not be tied into the existing system that exists currently here, there's an existing retention pond. And it's specific to the garage itself.
And that would be separate from any water coming from the facility itself?
Correct. The facility itself has five UICs that are specific just to the cooling tower, and the UICs actually recharge the groundwater system and also support the stormwater system. So the UIC, the water that's going into the UICs is actually cleaner than stormwater. In order for us to recharge the stormwater, we had to comply with DEP Clean Water Regulations in order for us to register, which the UICs are registered with DIP, we had to do a lot of math and calculations and prove to them that the water that is being recharged into the ground is clean water, which is coming from the cooling towers. And the cooling tower water goes through a very expensive filtration system to either do that, versus what you'd normally see.
And it's my understanding that there'll be a well, a new well?
Yes, correct. The well is for, specifically just for providing the cooling tower makeup water, so it's an alternative water use versus taking the potable town water and using town that spends a lot of money filtering, making potable water, as I'm sure you're aware, and then sending that potable water to a cooling tower. So the potable water will be used for the office components and for normal daily function that you'd expect to see in a office environment and an office building environment. The well is specific to the cooling tower and is an alternate, alternative water source.
And just to clarify for folks tonight, we're not actually talking about or permitting anything related to the well tonight, so that's not what's before us at all, but it's a fair question. Okay, any other questions? Joan, Joan, can you use the microphone?
Is the gentleman who, who's an immediate abutter, who had an email exchange with Roland today, present this evening?
I don't believe so. Sorry, can you speak into the microphone just for TV?
But I was going to mention this after Chris was done anyway, I was in contact with a, Roland put me in touch with a resident and a abutter, and, and I didn't want to mention it, I'm not quite sure she is talking about the same location of the parking structure that, that we are, only because of her email talked about a fence, now, you know, that we're not putting in, we are putting, we were thinking about putting a fence in, but due to the, what do you call it, critter?
So what John is referring to is during the original permitting, to assist in any light concerns from vehicular lights or even parking lot lighting, that we were actually willing to propose a fence in this location, but working with DEP endangered species, that actually putting a fence there is going to affect the property and crit, what they call critter crossing. So we actually provided additional landscaping within this area here to help assist in any potential headlight or light overflow that may exist.
With the noise and the lighting. So, the resident that I was speaking to today, the email that you're referring to, I think she lives over in this area over here, so I think she was thinking, I don't want to speak for her, that's why I was hoping she'd be here tonight, but I think she was referring to this bottom lot down here, thinking we were putting a garage on that lot. This is the lot, this is the new lot that we had in the site plan special permit that was approved, and to reiterate what Chris said, her main concern was the headlamp lighting from automobiles. She also mentioned the high light. With, with the precast concrete paneling that we have at each level around the perimeter, the headlight leakage will actually be better, because if that parking lot remains that great as it is now, those cars are just, you know, parking in spots. Now, as soon as they enter the lot, nobody will be able to see the headlights because we have the perimeter panels around the parking lot, the garage. Now, the lights on the upper level, as Chris mentioned, are ten feet. They were significantly higher when it was an at-grade lot, they were very high lights, and they're actually directed lights, so they're directed downward, okay, there's no outward. So I think she's, I don't know what, I didn't do the calculation, but the resident is somewhere over here, which, kind of off-the-cuff calculations, when we looked on a map, where it, you know, it's got to be over a hundred yards, you know, to that, to her residence. So, again, I don't want to speak for her, I think she was probably talking, thinking that the lot was going right here, right up against her property, the parking structure, but again, not here.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Yep, Joan?
Process-wise, our action on the request for the parking lot would be by an amendment to the site plan special permit?
Yes.
And how does that work?
What do you mean?
What is the, is there a hearing that we have to?
Well, no, so that's what we talked about at our last meeting, where Roland had presented the options, and because we didn't believe that it sort of triggered the requirement for a public hearing, we voted to go with this option where we did not have a full public hearing, but still had the time for comments from town staff and abutters and others, residents, and then we could approve this, I believe, tonight, Roland? I mean, you can, Roland can speak to the, what vote we take.
Yes, if, if the board approves it tonight, which I think you could, then I would draft a decision, an amendment decision, which would only focus right on that garage thing, and then with the boards, if the board is okay, I would pass it up to the manager's office, and then Kate could sign it for the board, and then this gentleman could move forward towards the building permit, at which point all of the details would be reviewed, including, you know, including whatever you would like to include in the, in conditions that is part of this amendment, and that'll all be in there then.
Okay.
Thank you.
That makes sense?
Okay, so the conditions would be prepared by you, is that it, or?
Well, we'd have to put those in.
You would direct me tonight with any conditions you would like to have included in the amendment decision.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, my only question actually might be more for Janet. I had, I didn't see like an official note, I believe, from the DRB, I think I realized that I was reading your summary of the DRB meeting, maybe in the selectmen reports, and that's where I had seen it, but it sounds like, you know, Insulet's been receptive to the DRB's suggestions, and I was wondering if there was anything else from that meeting or suggestions that they had put forward?
The only, they just met last week, and the only suggestion that came out that was mentioned in Peter Darlow's memo on behalf of the board was, there's a little spot of parking, I think it, I can't read that map, anyhow, you would, yeah, you would, and there was some suggestion that it be made into green space, just so that when you're approaching the garage, I don't think that all of the members were, you know, insisting on that, it was the suggestion of one member, and I think that they also recognized that there was an increased pervious area all around, which was much more obvious on this map, which I got at the meeting, than it is on, on the maps that are on the, on the screen. But that was really the only suggestion that I heard, that there was a lot more discussion about the aesthetics, the structure of the garage is going to in color echo the color of the new, the new building, this reddish, brickish color, and then the cream color for the, the towers and whatever. These are things that, you know, I think presumably would look larger for, for designers than for engineers, but anyhow, but that was all. I think that the stormwater management system was fine by our town engineer, and then they did make the point that they're staying away from, they're respecting the wetlands area, especially because there has been evidence of some sort of endangered species, so, but...
No, Janet, I'm glad you brought that up, because there were those two, there was another recommendation, I think, around the, a landscaping plan to put on the, so in this area here, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, so the, there were the two recommendations, one was for the at-grade parking that exists, I think there are roughly fourteen, fifteen parking spaces here that are not inside the garage.
Okay.
They had asked if we would consider, you know, making that green space, and then they wanted a landscaping plan from the main Nagog Road, right here on this side, where the structure is going. So, we're, we're fully on board with the landscaping plan. The fourteen spots, that, we would respectfully like to not do that, and the reason we would like not to is because these spots, this is the entrance to our headquarters building, this is the headquarters building, this is the plant. Our parking, if any of you, if you've all been there, which many of you probably have, is really spread out. This parking down in this lot is a pretty long distance from here to the building, particularly in inclement weather, bad weather in the winter, these spots would be very advantageous for our employees to get closer to the building, so, you know, we would, we would ask that we will do all that we can with this landscaping plan to ensure that, you know, that it, it looks good from the, from the Nagog Park Road.
Sure, that makes sense. And then my one question is, the, this is not taller than the building, right? So if you're, if you live in Avalon, you don't like see that?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Right, and just real quick, as John said, yes, it's this lot, but more, I mean, somewhat a little more important, the reason, the lot acts as a transition actually into the garage, and for us to try to utilize the existing topography that's currently there, which is basically sloping up and sloping down again, if we were to try and do anything from a landscaping standpoint or eliminate the lot, trying to get into the garage and would actually force us to alter all that existing topography, which is what we're trying to use to hide some of the leveling. So it actually is counteractive to us trying to hide some of that leveling and working with the existing topography, because it would re, it would not be possible to get in at this location without modifying it drastically from an elevation standpoint.
I just wanted to add something that came up at DRB and had to do with the accessible parking spaces, because the garage is not going to be elevated, but all of the accessible parking spaces are going to be either right in front of the building, or they're going to be on the first, the ground level of the garage, right? That's what I recall.
They're all currently located in this location here, which is, which is where the front door and the accessible route is.
Right, that makes sense. Okay, all right, thank you. No other questions from board members? Questions or comments from the audience?
Thank you, I'm Kim Castens from Pope Road. Congratulations on your business growth so quickly that you're able to add a third line. I hadn't heard about that, and I had some questions about that. So these three hundred and twelve new cars, they add additional congestion, additional carbon emissions, and I wonder what actions you've taken or considered to cut down on the use of private cars among your employees, van pools, car pools, telecommuting, public transit, other ways to have fewer cars rather than, or in addition to more parking?
So first, Kim, you have to address the board, we don't do a back and forth like that, that's not how it works.
I'm sorry, I made the same mistake with Allison.
So you can address the board, and then I can ask for a response if we so desire. So why don't you ask your questions, and then I can ask for a response?
Okay, thank you, Katie, I made the same mistake with Allison, and I apologize for that. Okay, so this new company in town is having a faster growth than expected, so I'm... so I'm, I'm just curious to know two things. The first is about what other actions they've taken or considered to cut down on the number of cars as opposed to accommodating more cars, or in addition to accommodating more cars, in terms of public transportation, van pools, car pools, et cetera.
And do you have another question, or is that your?
Yes.
Okay.
My question, my second question has to do with water use. So, with three production lines, they're presumably going to use more water. So, I'm wondering what the additional water usage will be for the third line. And also, I had heard that the well on the site was not acceptable water quality. So, I'm wondering, you know, the interactions between this new production line and their need for water.
Sure, so I'm going to ask them to answer your question about the cars adding emissions. I, if they want to, they may address the water issue, but again, we're not discussing that tonight, and it's not really the issue that's before the board or on our agenda. So, I'd rather not address that unless they choose to. But it's really not what we're talking about tonight, or what has been posted on our agenda. This is about their parking, an amendment related to their parking structure. So, I'd ask John or Chris to answer the questions on that.
Take the lead here. On the, on the parking, we, several months ago, we had an initial discussion with, I think it's the Acton Shuttle, or the Shuttle Service that is in town. And it was just too far out to really do anything concrete. But we will reengage again as we get closer to moving the employees over, which we think will be sometime in the first quarter of next year. Number of employees have expressed the desire to use public transportation. When you look at our heat map, from an HR perspective, of where all the employees currently live versus the distance from Billerica to Acton, it's amazingly, amazingly, it's almost the same diameter when you take an average of where the, the distance employees have to travel on that, on that heat map, you know, to where Acton is. So, I think a lot of people, how they get to work today, there's not a lot of public transportation close to Billerica, so a lot of people do drive automobiles right now. But a lot of people have expressed a desire to take public transportation, if the Shuttle Service, if we can, you know, and I see no reason why not, it was just too soon. It was a year, year and a half out. But we will reengage with the Shuttle Service and see, you know, what type of arrangements we can make for employees. And Chris can answer the water.
Just one other thing to add regarding the parking, is that we're currently in the process of working with Insulet. Or, I thought you knew this. The, we're actually putting in also electric car parks. In, right now, where I've been working with John Bowden, who's not here tonight, on the location, but we're actually putting electric car parks as well that offer, yeah, electric car charge in various parking locations. So, also to try and be sensitive to the car. The existing, I know we don't have to, just for the board's benefit, from a well standpoint, the existing well is currently in this location, it is contaminated, it's being decommissioned. We're working with the Board of Health, which we just got a test well permit from the Board of Health. To relocate the well in a better location, we will be doing well testing on the proposed well. And if the well actually comes backward, that may have any contaminants in it. We're actually going to filter it, we have to filter it, before we utilize it for any of the cooling water system. And then, when that gets discharged, it actually will be cleaner. So, we'll actually be pulling potential contaminated water from the well, filtering it, and then discharging it through the UIC back into the ground.
Great, okay, thank you very much. Yes?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I'm hoping that the neighbors got notified before the design was at the designer review board, because that's a great time for people to come and actually get what they want, as opposed to coming at the end when all the staff approvals and everything else is done. So, my comment was about the light leakage, and if there won't be any, then I hope you put that in the permit, so that there is an enforceable method because of getting it to be no light leakage. Because when people, when the drive, when the cars come up, they often get below those things for that flash of a moment. And so, I hope that that's put into the permit. And the part about no increase in stormwater discharge, I hope you put that into the permit. I was concerned about whether or not they're doing irrigation of lawns, and I was wondering if there's a roof, because there's an opportunity to have a green roof put on it to lower both the use of water, and, so that's that. I thank you for the electronic charging, electronic vehicle charging stations in the shuttle. But there was also, at the town meeting presentation, I remember a lot talked, there was a number of comments relative to local employees, and there was talk by your company about hiring local people. And so, I hope that that's a good way to decrease the use of fossil fuels, too, if you're hiring local people. But either way, I hope you include the, the light emission as a term, or a condition, rather. And I do hope that some, somehow, we hire more local people. I know that there was a discussion in the EDC about that they couldn't find enough people, and one of the comments in the EDC was, then you can pay people more. And there was a discussion about the average salary and whatnot, and I didn't have a lot of information there. But still, I feel like there should be more local hiring. Thank you.
Okay, John, you'd like to respond? Sure.
I just wanted, at least on the local hiring, we have aggressively been trying to outreach to not only the Acton area, but the surrounding areas around Acton for employees. In fact, I know we had signs that we would put up similar to the, down at the bottom in the Nagog Park, about hiring opportunities and, and, you know, you know, what number to contact, you know, so that we, people, anybody that wanted to interview for our jobs, you know, they could, they could call this number and come in for an interview. I don't know the result of that from HR, I haven't been in touch with HR, but we are making attempts to outreach to the, to the local community. Oh, your, your second point about the, about the lighting, I mentioned it, I wouldn't recommend putting there's no lighting. There will, there could be flashes of lighting, obviously, as people drive in and out. My comment was, compared to the existing at-grade parking that we have right now, it's going to be significantly reduced versus the existing wide-open at-grade parking. So, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Tara?
I guess my comment is that if they are telling us that it's going to be a reduction, then let's put the reduction into the permit, so that there is an enforceable. There's a way for these folks to come back, there's, you know, a lot of people that live there. And if you believe it's going to be, and you're honest, then I think you can put that in the permit. Thank you.
Sure, then you run into issues of having to measure the current state of lighting, and then future, right, so.
I'd just like to point out just real quick, the current lighting that's proposed, I think it's important to note, that's proposed for the parking lot, is not being proposed, the current lighting that's been previously approved
Right.
is approved without low-security lighting, which is what we are now doing, and approved without some additional measures from a lensing that we are currently proposing to do. So, just by those two measures alone, you'll, from a photometric standpoint, it'll be a lower light level.
Okay, so perhaps we could put in the requirement on the low-security lighting or something like that, but, you know, and that's then what you have said you would do. Okay, seeing no other comments, Joan, yep?
This, this talks about
What's this?
Increasing traffic on 2A between 71 and 79 peak-hour vehicles. Minor delays on 2A and Nagog Park Drive. And then, turning into the site. Available site distances from the site driveway are limited in both directions. So, is the landscaping you're talking about taking that into consideration?
And just to note, this is the traffic study that was part of the original permit.
Correct.
Just so people know what you're referring to.
Right, so the traffic, the original traffic study made recommendations to cut some of existing for visibility, which is part of our original landscape plan, which we plan on incorporating, the proposed landscape, in that we will be working with the town and working with design review. As a follow-up, we, we agreed to provide them with the landscape plan and work with them, very similar to working with the town engineer and the engineering. That's different than what is referred to here. And just for note, the original parking study, just because I think somebody made a comment, was actually done for 900 and something cars, just for note.
Okay, so seeing no other comments, why don't, before somebody makes a motion, if there are any conditions that people are thinking about that they would want to request, why don't we say them now, so that we can agree or disagree on those, and then put together a motion? So, are there any conditions that people would want to include? Janet?
The provision of the landscaping plan?
Okay.
For whatever, the front, you know what it is anyhow. The front area, whatever.
Okay, as long as Roland knows and can write up what we're saying. Anything else?
And the modifications to the stormwater design?
Yep, I think they would have to do that anyways, but yep. Okay, and then I, I think it would make sense to put in the, that they will use the low-security lighting.
Right.
Okay, anything else that people want to include? Okay, then can I have a motion?
I move to approve the proposed amendment of the site plan special permit with the conditions that we've just agreed to, or described.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great, excellent, well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay, up next is town volunteer application discussion, which I think is slightly a larger discussion as well with the volunteer coordinating committee. Peter, did you want to make introductory comments?
Okay, thank you. I, I asked that this be put on the agenda because it turns out that state law is a little bit in conflict with the immigration policy that we adopted with regard to qualifications for members of a couple of town boards. I met with the VCC, they brought this issue to my attention. We asked town council to take a look at it. Nina Cook's memo here is attached. It doesn't only address citizenship requirements, it also talks about residency requirements. Basically, the problem is that the general state statute that governs town operations that don't have town manager forms of government says that every year, town meeting will elect or appoint members of various town boards that are registered voters in the town. And to be a registered voter, you have to be a citizen. So, there were a couple of boards that that applies to. Even though the charter changes the method of appointment to make the town manager, or the Board of Selectmen, I guess, the appointing authority, rather than town meeting, for members of these boards, it's town council's opinion that it doesn't change the qualification requirements that are in the state statute. So, as I understand it, it is the Board of Assessors and the Board of Health that would require that any members appointed to those two boards be registered voters in town, which would require them to be citizens. So, that is a little bit at odds with our policy of not asking any questions about immigration status. So, that's why I brought it here. There are several other recommendations the VCC has proposed. I can go through those quickly, and Greg is here to help us out, along with Juan and Jennifer from the VCC. Charlie, a longtime member, has now resigned. So, so it's the Board of Health and the Board of Assessors, some other committees, the Finance Committee, the VCC doesn't deal with that committee, so that's up to the moderator to make appointments to that committee. And most of the other committees in town are, have their own statutes that apply to them. They're not covered by the general state law, so none of them appear to require that registered voters be members. But what the VCC recommends in their memo is that the addition to the application for volunteer of a statement delineating the applicable citizenship requirements is advisable. I would suggest if we decide to do that, it should be limited, obviously, just to the two boards that that particular requirement applies to. So, let's deal with that issue first. Greg is here. If, I don't know if, Greg, if you have anything, the chair of our volunteer coordinating committee, if you have anything that you want to add to that?
Sure.
About that particular issue?
Thank you, Peter. Greg Hutchins, Parker Street. The, there's one other committee that there is a bylaw requirement, that is the Community Preservation Committee. The bylaw requires that at-large members be, quote, "legal residents" of the town. So, we have a, I have here the latest iteration of our, our proposed update to the volunteer application form that has, the suggestion is to have two different statements. And I can just read them to you. Under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 1, membership eligibility for the Board of Assessors and the Board of Health is restricted to resident voters. If you are applying for either the Board of Assessors or the Board of Health, then by submitting this application to the Town of Acton, you are attesting to your status as a resident voter of the Town of Acton. Next paragraph, under Town of Acton bylaws, any at-large members of the Community Preservation Committee must be legal residents of the Town of Acton. If you are applying for the Community Preservation Committee, then by submitting this application to the Town of Acton, you are attesting to your status as a legal resident of the Town of Acton. It was our impression, based on our conversation, both with Nina and with Mary Ann Fleckner, that just including a statement of that, or statements of those sorts, would suffice to, essentially, we're telling our applicants to self-limit to those who are eligible for, for the boards that have some sort of legal requirement. I made copies of this latest version of our, of our application questions. It's not really laid out in any appropriate final form, but I can pass these out to you if you would like to have them.
Sure, that would be great, thank you, Greg. Do you mind giving one to Lisa as well, and we'll put it in the packet? If you don't have enough, I can share. Oh, sorry, okay. Lisa, you can have mine, I can look on.
You know, residency is a little, obviously, a much different issue than citizenship or registered voters. I wasn't aware that, you know, we would appoint non-residents of the town to any board. It seems like the statute requires if you're appointed to a board, even though you don't have to be a resident to be on it in the first place, but you move out of town afterwards, you have to resign anyway. So, it's a little confusing to me, but.
I, I agree, just from personal knowledge, we do have on the West Acton, oh, I'm going to get the name wrong, the Sewer
Sewer Committee?
Committee for, for West Acton. We do have a Boxborough resident
Okay.
who is there because he owns a business in West Acton.
Okay.
So, there is certainly precedent for having non, a non-town resident on a town board. I'm not aware of any requirement. Oh, and as Charlie is reminding me, the Economic Development Committee also has some non-Acton residents on it.
Okay. Okay, well, I make, I suppose that makes some sense if you don't, if you own a business in town and you want to be on the Economic Development Committee, that would make some sense, I guess, but.
Other questions or comments from board members? Janet?
First, I just wanted to thank Charlie for your service. I don't know if Greg is going to do, re-tape the Captain Acton video, flying through the air looking for volunteers, I just, that was probably the most entertaining thing I had seen at that point on Acton TV, was Charlie flying through the air like Superman, anyhow. But I wanted to, yeah, and it was really, you know, pretty bad, whatever, photoshopping, but that made it even funnier, but, but thank you very much. I, I have, yeah, I think that with regard to the Sewer Committee, or probably EDC, you define in the membership the positions, and in the case of the Sewer Committee, we defined one position as being somebody representing the businesses in West Acton, and clearly, that wasn't going to be limited to people who are residents, and I think the same is true of some other committees. There are some positions that are defined by, you know, if you're, I think, well, I don't know, Health Insurance Trust, don't they have people who aren't residents, anyhow, but, but that's a different thing. So, there are committees out there that don't always have residents. My, I have, I mean, I like, you know, your, your proposed addition of language. My only suggestion about these two clauses is because people are lazy readers, if you want to make sure that the people who are applying for either the Board of Assessors or the Board of Health and/or CPC see those things, just have a little, just say, attention or, or just say, applicants to the, the Board of Assessors, and just flag it so that they will be sure to read those provisions. I just, I'm, I'm a compulsive reader, but I just know so many people, including in my own family, who aren't, and I get really irritated. I put it in here, so I've learned, I've learned, put it up, first line, you know, the, what you want from them, you ask, and then you go into the details, so, anyhow, but I have no other comments. Thank you.
Comments or questions from other board members on this issue? I'll just say thank you, I, I, you know, it was important that we make sure that this complies with our immigration policy, and I think that this works as a way to do it, because the point of the immigration policy is that we don't collect information on people's status, and this would continue to do that in a way that I think works, so I think it is acceptable. Peter, you have?
Yeah, I don't know if you think we need to vote on this, or just give the sense of the board that this is acceptable. I, I did have one other question for the town manager. It looks like, and this is a separate issue from the VCC issue, but they also go into town employee positions and say that these other town employee positions that are supposed to be appointed by town meeting every year have to be both residents and citizens. I'm not sure we're in compliance with that. I'm not sure that, certainly the selectmen are both, but I'm not sure the town treasurer, I don't know for sure, but I think a lot of these people who occupy these positions don't live in town. So, the tax collector, the auditor, the highway, the road commissioner, the tree warden, we're talking about hiring a new one. I don't know how many constables we have, they're supposed to be both residents and citizens, I guess you have to be a citizen probably to be a constable in the first place, but I would ask Nina about that at, at office hours, the next opportunity you get. I don't know if we need to change the charter, or, or what, but we probably should be in compliance if that's what is the legal requirement, so, anyway. Before I go into the other issues that the committee has raised, how do you want to deal with this?
I don't think we need a vote, it looks like there's somebody from the audience who wants to make a comment, so I will allow that first, though, before moving on, so, Greg, sorry, thank you.
Okay, and I just, okay, I'm sorry, here's-
I, I don't mind.
No, go ahead, we're dealing with-
So, relative to council's opinion, is it that it actually conflicts, or is it that it might conflict?
It's that it actually conflicts. These are requirements under state, these are the-
Okay, they're firm requirements under state law, okay. And so, I was wondering if there's a way that if we actually changed the bylaw, that we could resolve those differences, because I'm very excited by the idea of having non-citizens participate in governance, and if sometime in the future, we'd like to explore the idea of having teens, under eighteen, whether we can get that going on too, but, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Peter, so you want to go into-
Yeah, I would, I would just add to Janet's comment, not only thanking Charlie for yeoman work he's done, but Greg and all the other members of the committee for doing an outstanding job and, and very, lot of work in populating all of our boards in town. Just to go through the rest of their comments, there's an issue with filling certain positions, and the, the VCC has already sent out an email, taken the initiative on that, to ask that we alert all the boards and committees to do a quick video with the Acton TV to explain what they do and solicit new members. I know particularly, we need members for the sidewalk committee, that, that we have, they have problems getting meetings together with quorums, and we have a couple of openings for associate members now on the Community Preservation Committee, so people out there interested in those issues, please fill out an application. But you want to talk quickly about the, the initiative to get Acton TV involved?
Sure. They have agreed to produce very short, two-to-three-minute promotional spots for each committee, and the, the, the plan would be to have the, the committee chair or other representative go to the Acton TV studios, essentially for a very brief interview. They would broadcast these spots initially as part of their regular talk of the town broadcasts that they are currently producing. They would then make the, they would put those spots up on their YouTube channel, they would provide a link to those spots to the town IT department, and the hope would be that the IT department would add that link to the committee's page on the town website, so that they would be, the spots would always be accessible, and, and if we could, we, the VCC, could direct a potential applicant, as, as we often do now, to look at the committee's page on the website, and then they could as well watch this promotional spot, which would in theory tell them a little bit about the committee, about what the committee has done, is doing, the commitment required from volunteers for that committee in terms of time, and any other requirements that might apply. Some have, some committees have quite a bit of outside education and training that members have to go through. What else can I tell you about?
No, I, I, again, thanks for taking the initiative, and I certainly encourage you to move forward, and whatever the selectmen can do to support you, and as a liaison, please let us know, and we'll-
Juan is, is, has offered to work on creating an online, I believe it was Katie's suggestion, that we have, in order to facilitate scheduling, filming these spots, that we have some sort of a online response form that each committee could go to, identify who from their committee is going to appear in this, in, in these promotional spots, and what are the best days and times for that individual to go to Acton TV. Juan has offered to, to build that form for us. Thankfully, we have somebody with brains still on the committee, now that we've lost Charlie. And, that isn't built yet, though, so I don't have the link, so I don't have the text for the email broadcast to give you.
Thank you, there's only one other issue that's actually not listed here that I wanted to mention, and that was the issue of volunteers who are appointed to certain committees to fill out the term of somebody who's already left. I thought that was on this list, but it's not right now, let me just talk briefly about that. We've talked with Lisa, and she's notifying people when they get appointed, when their term will expire, and I, I can't remember, and I haven't been able to look any up, do you tell us in your recommendations, the date of the expiration of this appointment that you're recommending?
I don't believe we do.
Okay.
Unless-
If that's possible, it might be helpful, but I would also, besides Lisa informing them, and I'm not sure where she gets that information, when we send recommendations through for appointments, we say in our recommendation to the town manager, or Lisa, to put on the agenda, we say in there when the end of the term of this appointment is, whether it's a full term or whether it's a partial term, because there have been issues with people who don't know when their term, that their term has expired because it was only up to fulfill the remaining term of somebody who resigned.
Sure. I think just when you email people to say that you're, that they've been appointed, that we just include in that email a note about when their term expires. But you do have that great form now where you send out to everybody whose term's expiring and let each committee know, which I have appreciated seeing, and it was, from just seeing it come through the various board shelves and committee shelves that I'm on this past year, it was very easy for people to kind of re-indicate whether they wanted to, to re-up their term, so I thought that was a really great way, way to do it, so I don't know who was the brains on the committee for that one.
Of course, it was Juan.
Right. It seems like you all work very, very well together.
I think Janet has it.
Janet?
It's all right, I'm ready, I can wait.
Yep, I'm ready. Janet?
My only question had to do with completing incomplete terms of other people, because I have one committee, the Cultural Council, where it created so much confusion because people were, you know, serving for one year, and then they'd re-up, and it was just chaotic, and people were resigning, I mean, they have a lot of turnover, and so I just said, just, you know, just assume, you know, when you're, when you're new, just, you're on for three years, and then, you know, if somebody new comes along, you're on for three years. I think that there are some committees where it is very important to have staggered terms, because you don't want everybody stepping off at the same time, but I, I don't know if that's true of every committee that we are responsible for. So, I think that that's something to consider, is that if, say, the VCC can see that in the, the mission statement of whatever it is for a given committee, that having staggered, staggered terms is important, then we do pretty much have to honor the term endings. But for a lot of these committees, it may be, may not be that crucial. I mean, for, for some of the short-term committees that exist for a limited purpose, I mean, a lot of them are appointed, all the people are appointed at pretty much the same time, and the, their terms should end at the same time, but, you know, other committees are somewhere in between, I don't, I don't know, it's just that it was, it became such a headache that I just said, just, just have everybody, whenever they're new, get, get a three-year term, and then, you know, you serve it out, and if you, you step down after a year, then the next person who shows up just gets a three-year term, and it, I don't think that you have, you have such a big committee there in that case, that it's not an inconvenience, you don't have half the people stepping off at once, but-
Well, that did become, for the Cultural Council, a problem, because of seven Acton members, five of their terms were up this year, and one of the two that was not has resigned. So, the Cultural-
Maybe they need to have a stagger, maybe they need to have staggered terms, because it's not, the description doesn't say that, or did it say that they have to have staggered terms?
I do not know, I, I can't recall having seen the charge for the ABCC. Of course, ABCC was really created under a state statute, and, and the state mandates six-year term limits, so that would be two, three-year terms. And just to, to line, to line up town policy with the state law, your practice of just making, giving everybody a three-year term whenever that, whenever that starts, it certainly makes logical sense, and it's just, you know, perhaps misfortune that we had so many terms expiring the same year, and not all of those people, well, some were ineligible to, to re, to be reappointed because of the six-year limit, and others just chose not to be reappointed for, for another three years.
I think it became an issue also because somebody was filling, was, had completed somebody else's term, and, and had to then be reappointed for, I don't know, a two-year term or something, because, I don't know, she had served, she was, served one year, and then she was being reappointed for three years, and then she had two more years of eligibility before she'd serve her six years.
Right. That actually happened to me, personally.
Yeah, it became confusing, but, yeah.
As, as a member of the Cultural Council myself, that's, that happened, as well as it happening again.
You, you get, you spend one year off and you can go back on, but I've noticed that nobody does that, including you.
Not, not too many.
It's a fun committee, I don't understand why.
Actually, the lady that just resigned, the one whose term was not up, was a returning member. She had served six years before, and then took some time, and then re-enlisted, and for whatever private reasons, she decided that she could not continue, so she resigned. But that committee could, if we had not been able to replenish at least most of the people who, whose terms were up, they could have been unable to muster a quorum, even with their, the Boxborough contingent all reporting.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I just, yeah, it's always been my understanding that if you're appointing somebody to replace somebody who resigned, their appointment is to the end of the term of the person who resigned, so since we are all liaisons to the committees, I think if we make recommendations for appointments, it's probably a good idea to include the expiration of the term, and then Lisa can rely on that to tell people when they've been appointed, when their term is expiring.
Sure, that sounds like a great plan.
Both, well, because the town clerk provides the VCC with her master list of, of committee members, on a, basically, about a quarterly basis, I ask if she'll send me the new one, but that list does show the, the expiration date, the current expiration date for all committee appointments, so Eva would be able to tell you for any specific individual when their term ends, or the VCC can tell you.
Okay, great, that's perfect. John, it seemed like you had a question? John, can you use the microphone? Thank you.
Got it. I, I read your memo to the board of, Greg, of July 5th, where you reported on a conversation with Mary Ann Fleckner, our town human resources person, and I was particularly moved by her recommendation of, or suggestion for targeted appeals for volunteers for specific boards are more effective than a broad-brush approach. I think it's-
Correct.
You know, some of the more successful committees and appointments to the committee are those people who express, who, who are sought out because they have a particular interest in the subject matter of the committee, or on the more technical committees, perhaps the design review board or the planning board, to seek people out who have that background, and I think that would be a, a real benefit.
Yeah, that's something that Charlie did when he was the chair, and I've continued with, with his advice, and the, that's the reason for the targeted spots with Acton TV, for having a, a committee representative speak to what their committee does, and we hope that if, if serving on that committee- hope that if, if serving on that committee appeals to them, then they will know what about the committee would appeal to someone else, and that they will be able to elucidate that in that little two- or three-minute segment.
And Charlie, thank you very much for your long service.
Amen.
Janet?
Just, just one, one more strong suggestion. I know that in, in item, item, well, it's not number, the fourth item in the little arrow list, you say that there's no way that you can create an online fill-in application form. Shuan, if you're genius at creating new wonderful things, if you could, or somebody else could work on that, I think that that would be a real boon, and it would really be helpful, I think, to people who are interested in applying, to be able to fill in the form online. I know it's complicated, and I know there are forms that you fill it in, and then you can't save it, and you have to start all over again and things like that, but, where the information changes without your intending it to, but, but it would be wonderful if we can get to that stage.
Well, we can avoid printing the form, if that's, if that's the goal. Owing to my, my troglodyte tendencies and my limited high-tech skills, I did not realize that in order to actually fill in the PDF volunteer application form, you had to first save it to your computer, that, I, I would be, I would try to fill it in, and just downloading it from the town website, and then try to go in, and, and I couldn't put anything in. But if I save it to my hard drive, then I can fill in the form, save it again, and email it to the town manager's office without ever having printed the thing, and, and in fact, instructions to that effect are included in the, the proposed updated application that you all got handed.
Thanks.
So, that'll hopefully address, you know, people like Luddites like me, not obviously, there are plenty of people in town far more astute technologically than I am.
That's good to know, because the last time I filled out one of those forms was when I was applying to be on the conservation commission in 2005, and we had paper, everything was paper, and you had to go and drop it off, and the VCC was about two people, anyhow, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just end by echoing my thanks for Charlie and the entire VCC. I think a lot of people in town don't realize how much work is done by our volunteers on the various boards and committees that we have in town, and how much work is done by the VCC to make sure that we have volunteers on those boards and committees in town. It's a huge number of people, and it's a lot of work that you all do to make sure that people are volunteering and continuing to stay involved, and we're reaching out to all aspects of our community to do that, so thank you very, very much for that, and keep up the good work, and congrats on your retirement from this part, Charlie, so I'm sure you'll still be involved. All right, thank you all. Okay, that's it on that, so we will move to the last item, which is the RAC workshop update, so Joe and I will hand that over to you to talk about. Can you use your...
Both Ron and Barry, members of the committee, are out of town, so they asked me to update. We're planning a one-day workshop in September on a Saturday, I think it's the 22nd, and the committee has come up with five scenarios, that we have a list of, I think, 28 people who will be invited to participate, both appropriate committee members and town staff and water district personnel, and the idea is to find out what we know and what we need to know in developing these five different scenarios. When Ron and Barry come back, they want to meet with John and go over the timeframe, because right now it's a long day, and we're trying to work on shortening the timeframe. They also have Sarah Bersky, who works for the National Park, has agreed and has permission to be the moderator for the day, and she will not charge us.
Okay, great, yeah, I asked that we put this on because I think it's important, the RAC came before us and asked to do this workshop, and we gave them sort of the go-ahead, and considering that it's, you know, month and a half away, I thought it was important that the board understands what the proposal is for the workshop, including the ask, it seems so, all of us are presupposed to be there for an all-day event on September 22nd without having actually been invited to an all-day event on September 22nd formally, so, you know, it's helpful. I think one of my words of advice to the RAC would be to, once you figure out, you should figure out the timing of this quickly and invite people quickly, because you're asking for a large commitment from, again, people that are largely volunteers or that are town staff on a weekend day, which is essentially volunteering. So, that was one thing, so that was part of why we wanted to bring this before the board tonight, to understand what, what was going on. So, I didn't know if there were questions or comments that board members had in sort of the initial information that was presented in the, in the packet. Janet?
Yeah, I, I thought it was a pretty interesting proposal. I also thought it sounded like we probably need to prepare somewhat, or I think that maybe if RAC has a time to do this, if you could have little informational pieces that are going to be useful for people who don't necessarily have background in the topics, it just, I probably have a fair amount of background in a lot, number of the topics, but I don't think that that's true of everybody on the committee, and I could always use a refresher. So, if there's a little bit of a, of a handout, nothing long, because you're talking about not adding to our workload, but, and some of us on this committee do work, so, but yeah, something that would sort of help to direct the, the discussion a little bit more, so you don't have wild and crazy ideas coming out of left field that have nothing to do with the things that you really wanted people on the committee to talk about. That's the only suggestion I have, but, you know, thank you for pulling this together, it sounds very ambitious, but I think it will be interesting, so.
John?
I, just a, a question on the structure with breakout session one in the morning, breakout session two in the afternoon. There's a, like, take scenario one, is, is that discussed both in the morning, and then with a different panel in the afternoon, they'll redo the same question, is that the idea?
Yes, yes. So, everybody will have a chance at two, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, questions or comments from members of the audience? So, I think that was just some of the info we wanted to give to people and to share with RAC, and as you noted, they'll be meeting with the town manager and hopefully working on streamlining this timeline, and, yes, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Having learned about this workshop in my first few weeks, I think it's a great, it's a great idea, and I think it's addressed, addresses some needs that have come up over the last year in the community. One thing I do have a concern with is the timeframe, and I've already talked to Joan about it, and we're going to talk about it late, in more depth next week or soon. I think a full day on a Saturday is, is a lot to, to try to fit in to a busy sort of a month. September's a pretty, pretty busy month for people, but I think that we could really put together a good program in, in a smaller window that I think would achieve the goals, so I look forward to working with RAC on that.
Great, thank you very much for taking that on. Okay, questions from the audience?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I urge full participation in this workshop. I think that the topics are relevant, the scenarios offer, at least the ones that I've been reviewing, are not what I would consider fantasy, it's, it's, they're real-time crises that I think we need to address, and it's about, at least as I understood it, I haven't been to all the meetings, but it's to, how, help educate what types of questions we need to ask before things become a crisis, as opposed to waiting until yet again another crisis is before us. And it's also my understanding that, and again, I haven't been to all the meetings, but it's my understanding that it's meant to be street-level, no expertise required, no preparation required, at least I think that's what I've been hearing. Thank you.
Good, great, and again, that gets to my point, if you're asking people to take even half of a Saturday, the earlier you can start letting people that you want to participate know about this, know about it, I mean, I hear it third-hand, or in a report or something that, you know, and then I see this, that we're being asked, you know, my schedule fills up extraordinarily quickly, and, so luckily I blocked it off, but I had to get, you know, move things to make that happen, and I'm not the only person that has a schedule like that, so we're asking, again, people to volunteer a significant amount of time to do that. If we want the people to participate who should participate in this, then the earlier they can be asked, the better. So, that is my strong urging there. Okay, I think that's it, and we've already done the consent agenda, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? We are adjourned, and again, we do not meet unless there is some pressing need to call a meeting until September 17th, so thank you, everybody, and enjoy the rest of your summer.